So do you make Madam Chair, do you then move?
Yes, please.
Okay, so I guess the whole premise on how, you know, the form was prepared so that when you can see what's currently in the budget and the white column shows basically where we project that the budget will be at the end of the year and then the last column is just for your information to show what the change should be.
We move all of the appropriations then?
Thank you. Okay, the format is set up about the same as that one. And so we start with the different departments. The way that the legislation, I guess, and the operation is that for the police and fire, the only thing that was being charged to those two departments directly were their personnel compensation and their pension monies. All of the other expenses were being collected in other departments. For example, non-personnel expenses are being charged by ordinance to the ambulance fund with the police and fire, and you'll see when we get there. The benefits were being charged to a special fund set up just for benefits, but according to AICPA and accounting, the benefit should follow the SAP. So you will see there the movement when it says fringe benefits from like the previous years, and I mean, I can't speak on those numbers because I'm sure that OPAF was more than the numbers showing there for 11, 12, and 13. But basically, we were projecting out the amount for 2014 in July. Some of these projections were based on the fact that we thought, you know, everybody was going to be moving to the new insurance plan. So that's why it's much lower than what it turns out to be because, well, we don't have a new contract with the police, so they're still in the old plan which costs more. So therefore, it costs us more in the benefits than what we had originally projected for the amended appropriations. Then also, in police and fire, I spoke to moving the deficit from the fiscal watch funds that have a million dollars from the police levy and the fire levy. Those dollars have been absorbed in those funds. So that attributes to the increase over the provision projected as we look at the fire and police. And then also, I mean, that's in general. So you can see the police is the 424,000, and again, a lot of that is in the fringe benefit line and the others pretty much from the deficit that was included in the fiscal watch report where we had moved, and I do discuss this with Chief, there were too many staff charged to more than what the funding was for those, and that's why it was running a deficit. So we just realigned that so that the staffing that we have charged to those special funds will not exceed the revenue that comes in from those. So we had to move back to the police and the fire department respectively.
I got scheduled an EPL to get over.
The auxiliary, most of these are numbers that you've seen, and you can see it was not a big change except in fire, police as you go down. And then, of course, there was some change again in this fact. And as you see again, fringe benefits. And you'll see that for most of the departments with contracts because, you know, we just projected when we took out the new plan that we were going to save, you know, 400,000 or something like that, and that did not transpire. So you'll see increase in fringe benefits. Other than that, I mean, there's nothing really notable about the 2014 originally projected, you know, to what we're recommending at this point as you go down page three, you know, just move the pages.
I mean, just before you leave this page, in some of the lines, it's, does overtime actually mean overtime?
Yes.
Okay, because it's gone, it's gone way up.
Right, so that's part of, I mean, you know, most of that. Were you looking at the fire?
No, I actually was looking at the jail.
Oh, yeah, the jail, I mean, we did have overtime, it went up. I mean, it wasn't substantial. Well, no, actually, the jail went down.
It went down, but they still have overtime, yeah.
Oh, yeah, there's overtime, I mean, there's always overtime.
Did you see this?
And I guess the reason you don't see the real impact, when we did this in July, we anticipated and projected higher overtime, especially in the fire department. If you look at the previous years like 11 and 12 and 13 even, like the fire overtime is 114,000. And so in July, when we did this, worked with Chief Durson, you know, we had anticipated overtime to be high. So that's why it doesn't appear that there's much of a change, and it's even higher now. But I must say, the last pay, it was almost zero, it was so low. So I think we need to take our hats off to the new chief because overtime was just absorbing every pay, you know. But now we're seeing a decline in it, so hopefully it won't be that much more.
Go ahead.
How many auxiliary police are in here? I'll refer to Chief, because they all don't work at the same time. She goes to go out and auxiliary police.
I don't have an exact number, I mean, they're on a non-call basis, they all call at the time, but we probably have, hopefully, 20 altogether. I can get you the exact number, just by pulling up a roster and emailing it to you.
So these are pretty much the expenses as we. And as you know, what I can say, there are lots of payouts, we must add at least a half a million dollars in payouts from the different departments this year, so they're also attributed to the increase in expenses before to, in the various departments, I think, almost all departments.
Ms. Kroll?
Yes?
At the bottom, toward the bottom of page three, service director, we have, total wages went up $19,000. Some of that was the fringe benefits, but then 10,000 of it was salaries and wages. What happened that we have a $10,000 difference from what we appropriated in July and what we're going to appropriate now?
I'll have to see if there was a payment. I know there was a service director, I was told, Mr. or Ben or someone, so he may have had a month or so, and I don't know. I mean, I have to go back and look at the actual payroll records.
Yeah, he retired this year, but we got to pay him off.
Yeah, so.
I mean, will you go back to page two for me? Just, I was, I heard when the bill came in that we now owe several thousand dollars for the public health, and we looked around, and it seemed like it was based on a per person. If we're looking at the number of people that we service, more that population-wise, is that something that we can go back and take another look at? Because it looks like it was at 96, then it went to 88, and now it's back up to almost 89.
Up to 90?
Up to 90, yes, 90. Which seems like an awful lot when we don't really use that.
I'll have to defer to the rear to help with that, I'm not sure how they.
Subordinated? They said it didn't increase from last year, so.
Yeah, I didn't see the actual, and in fact, we didn't pay the bill, it was automatically deducted from our property taxes, yes.
For the board of health?
The 90,000, 45,000 was deducted in March, and the other 45,000 was deducted in October when they give the settlement for the property taxes. So this pay, we didn't have to write a check, that's their procedure.
So they have board of health contract that we signed?
We didn't, we haven't signed any. This is what they called it, board of health.
We didn't sign any contract this time around as yet, we usually do.
Well, I mean, I can investigate, but like I say, it was automatically, there was no one that asked if you want to pay it or what have you. They automatically deducted appropriate property taxes, right? They deducted half and half.
They said two installments, 45,000. Go ahead, Linda. It's in the Ohio Revised Code, you have to. If you don't have a health department either in your own city, as the city of Lakewood and the city of Shaker Heights has their own health department, according to Ohio Revised Code, you have to be affiliated either with a department adjacent, a city adjacent to you, which I don't believe the, the only one that's adjacent to Maple Heights would be the city of Cleveland, if, and I don't know. So you have to be, you have to do this according to Ohio Revised Code. It's based on the census numbers and then it's per capita, so based on whatever the census, which, that would be my only question about this number, is that the census, if they were going by 2010, it would be less than 2000. The previous contracts, and I didn't see the contract, but I saw the letter from the board of health, and it was based on the 2000 census in 2011. They wouldn't have had the numbers yet for the 2010 census. So my only question would be that if you got, if they, if they just took it, then my question would be, did they base it on the 2000 census or the 2010 census? As far as paying it, there's no, you have no option.
I'll call, I'll call the legislature, we should know.
Thank you, let's see what they say. Okay, curiosity, because we don't seem to get a lot of benefit unless it's West Nile springing.
Okay, so I think we have moved pretty far this year, on page five.
I have a question on page four. Mechanics?
Yes.
Other administrative is up almost $50,000. What was the cause of that?
Most of it is all the repair, I mean, most of all their stuff is all the repair. So like I say, when you see their 2015, you'll see all their program now, the material expenses, so that we can track how much it was spent on different items.
Is there any special reason why it's up 50%?
Well, the car, as I understand, the plate is old and constantly needing a chair.
So it was just a unfortunate figure in 2009, July?
Well, no, again, like I say, most of the expenses, as you will see on your expense report, says other administrative. So when the budget was prepared, I was preparing it for the most part as a trend to other administrative, not really at that time knowing what was in these numbers as you look across. Like in 11, 12, 13, you really don't know what's in that number other than, all other than personnel. So we're now breaking that out so that we can do exactly what you're asking, to see what's the trend on some of the large expenditures and see how we can counteract some of those.
So next year, we're going to separate out these?
The majority ones, the material ones, right, like vehicle repairs.
Tires and?
Well, maybe not to that extent, but it may have vehicle repairs and parts of maintenance, you know, different contracts that you have to maintain, copiers and different things like that, some of the major expenses.
But it'll still be on the mechanics, it won't be broken out to the different vehicles from the different departments?
The bill and the respective department, you can notice all the departments, but the most part have other administrative, and they all need something different to that department, so whatever, whatever to that department, that's what we break out. On page five, under miscellaneous expenses, that's where you will see the movement of the healthcare. The first line, it just said fringe benefits, and it was all, you know, lumped together. And of course, we moved it, well, even in July is when I first suggested that we move it to the respective funds. But you can see where all of the fringe benefits were lumped together, and you really couldn't tell by department who was using what or, you know, the cost.
If you look above that, Ms. Kroll, lands and building, we have a $390,000 increase in other administrative?
Right, one of the things that were placed there was the insurance, if we properly that normal insurance that I was talking about, it probably will be moved to miscellaneous, which is like the common, non-departmental type expenses. So those two will probably, you'll see some shift in the purging emerging of those two. They've been used interchangeably, you know, for lands and building, which should just be lands and building, you know, the groundwork, the building repair, those kinds of things.
So this was some insurance costs that were moved there?
Yeah, part of, the norma.
What does that mean, what do you mean by normal insurance cost?
You know, I don't know what the acronym stands for, but it's, it's like a consortium of insurances. There's maybe about 10.
Oh, norma? Okay, I thought you said normal.
Yeah, the norma. And so, and that also would include, if you remember, I said last year it was placed in 2014. We paid the 2013 this year, we've also paid this year and this year, so.
To norma?
To norma.
And you expect that to be moved to miscellaneous in the future?
We will realign it where it should be, which probably is a non-departmental expense, and that's where, what most of the miscellaneous expenses, like I say, the two would probably shift, but in total, they're probably about the same.
Where was that expense moved from?
Where is that?
You mentioned that $390,000 was moved. Where was it moved from?
I didn't say it was moved, I said that it included payments from last year and this year.
So, so then the 84,000 that we projected in July was just simply incorrect?
Of course, it's incorrect, it's what we knew at the time. Like I said, if you remember, I started by saying, a lot of these were based on the previous trends from information that we had. Now that we have gone through almost a whole year and can see what the operations of the city, we can better project and realign these numbers as to where they belong, versus just looking at some total numbers. And there you'll see the total general fund, the last line. And again, the shaded line column, the first shaded column, the 12 million, 850, that's basically what we had unfilled on amended appropriations. And so to project it is the 14 million because of all the extra bills that we paid.
And Ms. Kroll, as you said before, and just to make it very clear, that even though we're going through 2014, we are still carrying over, I think as you stated in the beginning, 1.3 million dollar deficit from 2013.
Approximately.
And that is not reflected in this budget, though if this budget actually balances, so to speak, it does not mean that we're in the black.
See, I can't.
And this, this budget that we have right here, is this reflecting the 1.3 approximate budget that we're in deficit from 13?
Right, so, I mean, if you want to subtract that out, then of course that would bring down a 14 million dollar number, but also this year, there were some excessive expenses like the payouts, okay, and overtime, you know, those kinds of things, so that would bring it back up some for those, for the itself payouts, some large ones.
What did that come to, the payouts roughly?
Approximately, maybe about a half a million dollars, just across the city.
We have 400K on your email.
But I'm just saying that there's been horses and, you know, I'm going to add to that. And I tried to include everything I know in here, so any payouts that I know about for this year, I try to reflect them in here, even though they may not physically have been paid out.
I agree.
Yes.
Okay, to expand on Tony there, so that's approximately that you said, to a point that 2.8 million in the rate deficit.
That's where we may end up, at the end of 14, right.
Thank you.
But again, like I say, you know, the numbers, and I made it again with the state on Thursday, but the number that she sent me was close to that also, because I have her documented, where she approximated, because they immediately went and pulled out all the revenue we had projected for the levies and all of that, and that's why that's looking like that. Because remember, there were some recovery items that we had projected that had to be removed, and so this is why it jumped up so.
Yeah, so we know, now we know 2.8 million.
Well, that's not definite, that's unalready, but I'm just saying that, you know, it's riding somewhere shy of 3 million dollars, you know. I mean, because some, I mean, a big bill or something may come in between now and December 31st, you know, I expect the kind of.
Usually happens.
That's what I say, so, that's why I say these numbers are just to help us in analyzing these numbers, they're not in concrete, you know, for being pronounced or written out or spread throughout the city, because they're still moving. Okay, well, that's it for that, we can move on to 2012.
One more thing, Ms. Kroll.
Yes.
If we look at the total estimated resources compared to the total projected expenditures for this year.
But you still hope for that.
Am I correct in seeing that we're estimating a $390,000 shortfall total to this year?
For the total, for the total city, yes, but 1.5, you know, is in the general.
The general funds.
Right.
But total, all, all funds considered?
For the total city, citywide.
And we started the year with about 1.8 million dollars through all the funds in the deficit?
Just the deficit funds or the total?
I mean, the total, total, in all funds rather. How much money did we start with? This was a couple hundred thousand?
Well, according to, it was about 900.
900.
So the hope is that, you know, we could, if this body will approve the realignment and the adjustments that we need to make, so that, because we have to send out and make the final budget based on what we feel that our final appropriations will be, and this is the best guess at this time. So what would happen is that the white column where it says projected for January through December?
Where would we know?
I'm just saying, in general, what we're asking approval for, I mean, was, is the white column, it says projected for January through December, that's what the numbers would look like compared to the one right to the left that says 2014 amended appropriations, and the same for the revenue, the direct income. Because like I say, there's a lot that's happened with the income since we first predicted this back in July, money that we did not anticipate and money that we did not receive. So for the revenue, the estimated resource of January through December, I'm estimating like 21,261, which is a decrease of 316,000. I'd say basically, I'm not receiving some of the real money and other funds, pretty much.
Go ahead.
Had the staffing levels that we have right now and the projected income that you see, do we have enough money to get to the end of the year at the levels that we are now?
Oh, yeah, I expect, it's like cash flow now, is that what you're talking about?
Yes.
Oh, yes, as I said, the biggest hurdle was getting through the repays in October and the million dollar debt service, so I consider it's home free now, that we're closely to get the next repayments. You know, we just had the ones, we have three days left, so we should be okay.
I guess I got a, got a concern looking at what the weather is like right now, and if we, if this trend continues with snow, I have a big concern about our service department and what our streets may look like without being spending money on overtime to plow streets.
What's the question? The question was overtime to plow streets.
Well, we only have, as you know, like six guys, so they're not, physically, they can't work that overtime. So, you know, I don't, I don't really understand your question, because they, they just can't, physically can't do it.
No, I understand, and I'm not suggesting that they do. I guess my question is, if we do have a heavy snow and we're not able to keep our streets clear, I guess, what do we tell our constituents and our, because we're going to get those phone calls, and it, is it as simple as we don't have the money to pay for the snowplows?
Again, what do you mean by we don't have the money to pay for the snowplows? You mean buying new snowplows?
No, no, just, just overtime and labor, labor costs, salaries.
Well, again, we only have six guys, and physically, they're, they're only going to work so many hours. The last, and I've already gotten those phone calls, the last couple of days, we had, we had the animal warden, our part-time animal warden was removing snow, our custodian was removing snow. Any available person, our guy in rec was removing snow, that's got a CDL, is in a truck, and we're doing the best we can with who we have. You know, we do have guys that are taking some vacations, they're calling sick, you know, we're doing the best we can. They're working very hard, and I think for what they were faced with the last couple of days, they did a really good job. They've been doing this, they have over 100 years' experience when you add all of them up. They know what they're doing.
Mayor, I think I understand Ron's question a little bit, too. Formally, you'd hear the plows start coming down about 4 o'clock in the morning so that the streets were clear when people started to head out to work, but I have a feeling that at this, at this juncture, they won't be starting at 4 o'clock, or their shifts could be realigned, but we won't have that early morning kind of thing, so it's, it is what it is at this point. Okay, any other questions here on this page?
Here.
Yes.
Is there any way that we could get 507 to agree to part-time? Is there any way that we could get 507 to agree to part-timers on-call, like they do in trucking? You get a list of casual employees, and you ask if you wish to work, snowplow, put you on the list, if the time comes, if we need you, we call you, and you bring them out? Is there something like that we can get on emergency, contingency when we need them?
We are looking into that with, with the union. We did have a couple of retired employees that asked, you know, to show the willingness to work if, if we needed them. A couple of them live here in the city, so we are checking into that.
Thank you.